AT&amp;T says it's six o'clock. So I'll remember talking like the most that we got about 12, 13 people listening and all. Hello Dr. Lopez. The Captain Clark, please call Rowan.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Doctor Middlebrook.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
If the clerk would please provide the education or invocation as well as Mr. Posey could pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you with grateful hearts for the gift of freedom and the privilege of living in this great country. Thank you too for this great city and all those who are willing to volunteer and serve to ensure its continued success. We pray for all those in our community who are in need of healing. As we begin this meeting tonight, we ask that you would bless this council and bestow on them your wisdom in their decision making. In your name we pray. Amen.
Sleep and rest.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm open for a motion on the matter.
Mr. President, I move for approval without review.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Next in the reports section, we have a proclamation, American Indian Heritage Month, the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Case Sutley and Joey Llewellyn coming up to join us. And Michelle. Well, how are you doing? Welcome. And we have a proclamation that we would like to present to them tonight. And, so the attorney, am I going to read this, or are you? I'll be glad to do it.
I'd be glad to read it. This note for the beautification of this.
This is going to be for the American Indian Heritage Month.
Sorry, I've got that one. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I Frank Brocado, Mayor of the City of Hoover, would hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Hoover and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Mr. Corley, just so you know, I have obtained a auctioneer in case you start to stumble, if you raise your hand, we'll call on you if we need you. Aye, Mr. Mayor. Next we have a presentation.
Yeah, we'd like to invite Ann McAdams, the President of the Beautification Board, to speak for a moment.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight to celebrate the Beautification Board's 40th anniversary. I'm honored to be the Chairman of this board and serve with so many fine individuals. We are a very hardworking board with numerous events and programs going on throughout the year. At this time, I would like to ask our board members to please stand. I would also like to thank the mayor and the city council for their support on this special day and throughout the year.
And we have seven, eight appointments to the Beautification Board. Five will be reappointments and we have three new appointments. So I'm going to ask our reappointments to come up first and then I'll have the new appointments come. Of course, Ann is one of our reappointments. Roberta Patkinson, please come up. Betty Dable, Sarah Johnson, and Pat Lawley. I've had the opportunity, as all of you have this past year, to work with these ladies. They've done a wonderful job and I appreciate them asking to be back, be reappointed. And so we have three ladies that rolled off, and so we have three new appointments. If you would come up when I call your name, Dawn Asak, Jean Ingram, and Susan Shee, please come up.
Mr. Mayor, oh, Betty. It's Betty Dable. First time I met her, I never met her. It's the last year I met her and I said, "I'm Frank Brocado," and she said, "Well, you're not pronouncing your name right." I said, "What do you mean?" She said, "It's Brocado." She said, "I'm Betty Brocado Dable from Hoover." And she's really right. So we're cousins, you know.
We've got some employees.
We do. We have Sergeant Rocco Renoir.
Mayor, I'm sure you're going to talk good about him, but I just found out he's got 17 days and about, what, eight, nine hours left?
Well, I've had the privilege of working with this individual for, I guess, about 30 years now. What a great police officer. He rode us through the ranks as a sergeant now and does a great job. He's been, I think, a good friend. I appreciate your friendship, professional friendship. The time we've worked has been really good. Always been a wonderful employee. Chief, I know that you would agree with me 100%. Came to work in 1987. Did you like Darlene? Darling, hello darling. And, you know, we hate to lose this fine sergeant here. But he is going to stick around after he retires and become one of our SROs. So our city is losing him in one sense, but our children will gain him in another sense. Congratulations on both your 30 years and your retirement and your new position as an SRO. And if I could, I'd like to invite Chief Gerzis down to wear in two of our US police officers. Just had an opportunity to meet these young men. They are really fine individuals. I'm grateful that they chose Hoover to spend their career. Chief, if you want to come up.
Mayor, council, guests, always, always an exciting time to introduce new officers. And before I say that, I want to thank, I see the council wearing pink. Of course, press cancer awareness month for the Hoover Police Department and of course, with our pink badges. And I've got actually pink socks on that have donuts on them. So friends, friends continue to bring me things like that. I don't find them worth it. But again, as you're well aware, a lot of requirements the last couple of years. So we've been fortunate to hire some very, very fine young men and women to join our ranks. Tonight, you'll meet two. Two guys that both are good friends and work for Northport Police. Both applied and we hired both of them, so very, very exciting. I'd like to ask Preston Nicholson, come down first. Preston. Preston started his career with a short period of time at Livingston Police Department and then almost three years at Northport. Just started with us in the last couple of weeks and working night shift right now, going through the field training. Second officer, Joshua Norris. Joshua, come on down. Joshua has a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Alabama Roll Tide and worked for Northport for approximately three years. As you well aware, that not an easy, not an easy time to get on through the police. I think we've got the finest department in the state of Alabama and we certainly want to hire the best. And I want you to know that these two guys have got great careers ahead of them. We're really excited about them joining the ranks, so I have a note for you.
Chief, I asked them why they would leave Northport and they said, "Because it's Hoover."
Aye, State Attorney. A police officer from the City of Hoover, Alabama. Do you sign and swear? I will. Do the best that I can. Thankfully discharge my duties of fireman. Execute the orders of my superior officers. In all cases. To uphold enforcement. Criminal laws and constitutions of state Alabama. The ordinances of the City of Hoover. The criminal laws and constitution of the United States. Pay the rules of the local police department.
Let's see. Mr. President, we are proud to announce tonight to introduce our new Assistant Fire Chief. Chief Bentley would come up and assist me with this, but, you know, a lot of people don't know this. They may think that the gentleman that's being named the Assistant Fire Chief is the first Assistant Fire Chief in Hoover. But actually, first Assistant Fire Chief in Hoover was Mayor Frank Skinner of the Hoover Volunteer Fire Department. Did you know that? Who told you? Okay. So, you know, it took us some odd years to recognize that we needed an Assistant Chief in this department. We, you know, we talked with Chief Bentley just as we looked at the future of the fire department. Saw an opportunity for him to rearrange his department in the name of a true number two man. So I'm going to turn that over to him as he conducts the ceremony to announce our new Assistant Fire Chief. Mr. Mayor, I'm the mayor, council, guests. It is with great honor and privilege that I announce two recent promotions, both were promoted on October the 9th, last Monday. The first is Assistant Chief Brandon Etheridge. Brandon has over 20 years' service with the City of Hoover Fire Department. He has been instrumental with all technical rescue disciplines such as search and rescue, vehicle extrication, fire spays, angle road. And he has done a phenomenal job with those disciplines. He also has fostered a tremendous relationship with the police department, with the SRT medic program, which he is heavily involved in. He has been heavily involved in our surface water and dive rescue crews and training. He served as a captain at Station 2 and commanded the hazmat unit there for several years. Up until Monday, he was the senior ranking battalion chief and has been for many years. He has tremendous respect from all the people within the department. He is a true servant for the fire service. And I'm honored to present to you Assistant Chief Brandon Etheridge. Our second promotion is the battalion chief Nathan Hines. And Chief Nathan Hines, come up. Chief Hines has over 16 years' service with the Hoover Fire Department. Chief Hines has been instrumental in our rapid intervention program, which is the program that teaches our people how to get our own people out of trouble when they get in trouble. He teaches that class at the Fire College on a regular basis. He's an adjunct instructor there and actively involved with those programs. He has been instrumental in the design, construction, and completion of our training center at Station 6. He is also well-respected in our department. And if you had a way to describe Chief Hines, it would be probably the hardest working guy in the fire department. He does a phenomenal job. He's got the respect of all of our people. And he now will assume the role of the health and train safety position within our department. And it is with great honor that I present to you the battalion chief Nathan Hines. Stacy, would you and Isaiah and Caleb come down? And Chief Etheridge and Natalie and Eli and Ray and Co. and Bobby, Suzanne and Leah?
Ah, Nathan Hines. Do you sign and swear? Do you sign and swear? And I will faithfully discharge all duties of fireman. And the battalion chief of the City of Hoover. Provide to the safety of its residents. Provide to the safety of its citizens. And I will uphold in the name of the orders of the City of Hoover. I will uphold in the name of the orders of the City of Hoover. Constitution of the United States. 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 To this I pledge my sacred honor. To this I pledge my sacred honor.
Three, one, two, three.
I think we are on to landscape maintenance. Thank you.
Before we get started with the action items, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we had a two-hour work session last Thursday and all of that is available on YouTube. If you feel that maybe there's something that you might wish, it's always available for you, both our work sessions and our regular meetings. With that, item six is to award bids for landscape maintenance services. We have resolution 567917 for interchanges and gateways. 5680-17 for roadway areas. 568117, facilities and miscellaneous areas, Mr. Corley.
Resolution number 567917 relates to bid number 17-031 for landscape maintenance service interchanges slash gateways. This resolution accepts a bid of Landscape Workshop LLC in the amount of $86,914 and authorizes the mayor or his designate to enter into a contract with the bidder for that amount.
We're going to vote these, all three together.
Resolution 568017 relates to bid number 17-032 for landscape maintenance service roadway areas. This resolution accepts a bid of Naturescape Inc. in the amount of $67,567 and authorizes the mayor or his designate to enter into a contract with the bidder for that amount. Resolution number 5681-17 relates to bid number 17-033 for landscape maintenance service facilities miscellaneous. This resolution accepts a bid of Landscape Workshop LLC in the amount of $54,947 and authorizes the mayor or his designate to enter into a contract with the bidder for this amount.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution 567917, 568017, and 568117.
Sir.
A motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Next is resolution 568217, Mr. Corley.
This resolution relates to bid number 17-036 for recreational league basketball uniforms. This resolution accepts a bid of Pennant Sports in the amount of $19,206.85 and authorizes the mayor or his designate to enter into a contract with the bidder for this amount.
Move for approval, resolution 568217.
Sir.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing, seeing, none, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution 5683-17.
This resolution authorizes an extension of the expiration date of the existing Cable franchise agreement between Marcus Cable of Alabama LLC, PBA Charter Communications, and the City of Hoover until April 16, 2018.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution 568317.
Sir.
Motion and second. Just for the record, this is Powell number 37. Since I came on the council in 2004, we've extended this contract 37 times. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing, seeing, none, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution 568417, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes certain city-owned items designated as surplus to be disposed as follows. Equipment, vehicles, and other various items to be sold as is at public auction. Various technology equipment to be recycled.
Mr. President, I would move for approval, resolution 568417 with the removal, as you suggested, of the work session of the top three items on that list.
Sir.
Motion, second. Those top three items are jaws of life rescue to, they're not going to pull a lot of money, but there are some agencies within Jefferson-Shevy County that would appreciate receiving the opportunity to help the people in their communities. We have a motion, a second. All, any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution 5685-17, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares the following properties located in the City of Hoover as nuisance as due to weeds and or high grass thereon. 2228 Tal Brook Road, Hoover, Alabama. 2233 Talheim Road, Hoover, Alabama. And 480 Fertile Creek Drive, Hoover, Alabama. The abatement of such weeds and high grass by the City of Hoover is ordered as provided under Alabama law.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution 568517.
Sir.
A motion, second. Mr. Mack. These statements on this.
The property is this, this area, which is three properties. This is the first hearing on all three. They're fairly straightforward. Front yards, some two of them were taken care of as backyards. You can see they're still overgrown and two out of the three are vacant. The other one-
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six eighty-eight seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a final acceptance certificate of completion form with Motorola Solutions.
Move for approval of resolution fifty-six eighty-eight seventeen.
Sir.
This is a great project finally come to an end, right? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Mr. Corley, resolution fifty-six eighty-nine seventeen.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a transit services agreement with the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority.
Motion to approve resolution fifty-six eighty-nine seventeen.
Sir.
Motion second. This is a agreement that was included with the budget and is for the budget of the amount. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six ninety-two seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute an assignment assumption development agreement between the City of Hoover and Alteris Development Company through the Village of Brock's Gap LLC where the development to be located at the corner of Stadium Trace Parkway and Brock's Gap Parkway.
Motion to approve resolution fifty-six ninety-two seventeen.
Sir.
Motion and a second. This is just a housekeeping to correct some paperwork. Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six eighty-eight seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a final acceptance certificate of completion form with Motorola Solutions.
Move for approval of resolution fifty-six eighty-eight seventeen.
Sir.
This is a great project finally come to an end, right? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Mr. Corley, resolution fifty-six eighty-nine seventeen.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a transit services agreement with the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority.
Motion to approve resolution fifty-six eighty-nine seventeen.
Sir.
Motion second. This is a agreement that was included with the budget and is for the budget of the amount. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six ninety-seven seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a professional services agreement with SS Nesbitt and Company to provide employee benefits consulting and related insurance brokerage services.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-six ninety-seven.
Sir.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six ninety-one dash seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution assents to the vacation by Jess, Alan Johnson, and Margaret Jo. Johnson, owners of following ingress egress easement situated in Jefferson County, Alabama. A part of an easement to be vacated situated in lot twenty-eight of Greystone Sixth Sector is recorded in map with seventeen pages fifty-four A, B, and C, and the office of Judge Probe Shelby County, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number five-six-nine-one dash seventeen.
Sir.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-six ninety-two dash seventeen.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute an assignment assumption development agreement between the City of Hoover and Alteris Development Company through the Village of Brock's Gap LLC where the development to be located at the corner of Stadium Trace Parkway and Brock's Gap Parkway.
Motion to approve resolution fifty-six ninety-two seventeen.
Sir.
Motion and a second. This is just a housekeeping to correct some paperwork. Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Item eighteen is a public hearing to hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed approval of the terms and conditions of a development agreement with River Chase Lorna LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership. This is to comply with Amendment seven-seven-two to the Constitution of Alabama. Mr. Corley, do you want to say anything about this as far as the agreement, so the people know what they may or may not want to speak to?
Yes, sir. We'll have a resolution to authorize the development agreement. The development agreement we discussed in the work session.
This is with?
This is with the Whole Foods. Well, I believe it's the local development.
Shopping Center, that includes Whole Foods.
That includes Whole Foods, yes, sir.
Right. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against during this public hearing? Council have anything for or against?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Work for a large engineering firm due to environmental issues prior to work with this, the developer of this area, I'm not sure if I understand what you're talking about.
Mr. Murphy is abstaining.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
During the last development agreements that we authorized, I stated that I would like to see some language in further development agreements that benefit the local business owner as well as the developer. I feel like these development agreements are only benefiting the developer and maybe not necessarily the local businesses located within that development. I don't know how that can be worked out, maybe the percentage of CAM charges during the development agreement agreed upon percentage to be decreased during that timeframe, but until that happens, I can't support any further development agreements.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Yes, Mr. President. A question that I ask.
Mr. President.
On a board.
We're still in a public hearing.
Yeah, this is, this is a public hearing. We.
So this is for the seven-seven-two hearing.
Okay.
Any comments or citizens, then we'll have a resolution.
So we should now discuss the terms of the agreement at the start? Okay, I'll stay until then. Anybody want to talk for the purpose of the public hearing? Seeing no one, resolution forty-six ninety-three dash seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Bricado to execute a development agreement between the City of Hoover and River Chase Lorna LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, and authorize validation thereof.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-six ninety-three seventeen.
Sir.
Motion and a second. If Clark will still notate that Mr. Murphy is abstaining, and please adjust Dr. Middlebrook's statements to fall within the resolution conversation. Mr. Posey.
Yes, Mr. President. With the work session I asked about to figure out and get some figures on the revenue from last year and how that would play into this fifty percent above, knew the new revenue coming in with the new store being added?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Posey, I do recall your request, and I'll tell you, it completely slipped my mind and put that in front of our revenue directors, so the fault on that is mine. Mr. Corley, I think we have language that establishes the baseline within the agreement. If you could eliminate some of that, it might help. It might, it won't answer specific numerical questions, but it might help Mr. Posey with the methodology that we're using.
That's right. The baseline tax revenue as defined in the development agreement means that tax revenue collected by the city from the property for the twelve-month period beginning November first, two thousand sixteen, and ending October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, calculated using total taxable sales during such annual period by all businesses located on the property and the applicable city sales tax rate then in effect.
So the late description of that, Mr. Posey, is that this is a net agreement for the entire shopping center, and certainly their new tenant that will be welcomed to the city this week is, will be the predominant carrier of the new revenue. What we, what we won't do in the way that that's constructed and Mr. Corley just read is we will not be rebating any money we would have otherwise received. So it has to be a net-net agreement for the entire center in this case, but the overwhelming majority of new revenue will come with the Whole Foods document.
One more question. In between this term between November first, two thousand sixteen, and then of course Halloween, how many new stores have opened up within that facility?
State the timeframe again, I'm sorry.
Between the term of the agreement where we're talking about the revenue, which would be, which would be November first, two thousand sixteen until ten thirty-one seventeen, how many new stores have opened up within the shopping center in that period of time?
I'm thinking one, but I, I would, it would be a licensure issue. I'd have to get you some definitive information from our revenue department.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clark, if you please, call the road.
Mr. Green.
Uh.
Mr. Lyden.
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye. Motion is approved. Mr. Corley, give a sip of water. Item nineteen, our amended agreements for the community service agreements provided for in the current budget, and we're going to start with resolution fifty-six ninety-four seventeen and work our way down to fifty-seven thirty seventeen. Good luck, sir.
So we're going to read these at one time and consider them all?
All at once. I do have the, I think the auctioneer left, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. I think you can handle those. You'll just bear with me for just a second. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-four dash seventeen. First of all, each of these resolutions authorizes the mayor to execute a community service agreement following, as these are following maps. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-four seventeen, Alabama Symphony Association, two thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-five seventeen, Alabama Wildlife and Rescue Service, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-six seventeen, Assistant Slade Birmingham, two thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-seven seventeen, Eighteen Ministries, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-eight seventeen, Birmingham Children's Theater, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six ninety-nine seventeen, Birmingham Museum of Art, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven hundred seventeen, Birmingham Food, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh one seventeen, Children's Harbor, four thousand dollars. Resolution fifty-seven oh two seventeen, Playhouse, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven zero three seventeen, Community Family Literacy Program, Communities Family Literacy Program, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh four seventeen, Crime Stoppers, five thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh five seventeen, Exceptional Foundation, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh six seventeen, Family Connections, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh seven seventeen, Freshwater Land Trust, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh eight seventeen, Glenwood Center for Autism, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven oh nine seventeen, Hoover Arch Alliance, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven ten seventeen, Cooper Bells, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven eleven seventeen, Hoover Historical Society, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twelve seventeen, Hoover Service Club, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven thirteen seventeen, Hoover Autumn Foundation, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven fourteen seventeen, Jefferson County Council on Haging and Wheels on Wheels, ten thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven fifteen seventeen, Kid One Transport, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven sixteen seventeen, Leadership Hoover, thirty-six thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven seventeen seventeen, Aquaint Center, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven eighteen seventeen, Oasis Council, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven nineteen seventeen, Prescott House, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty seventeen, Red Cross, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-one seventeen, Red Mountain Theater Company, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-two seventeen, Safe House of Shelby County, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-three seventeen, Shelby County Children's Advocacy Center, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-four seventeen, Shelby County Humane Society, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-five seventeen, Special Olympics, four thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-six, fifty-seven, twenty-six seventeen, Abortion Prevention Coalition, two thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-seven seventeen, Birmingham Technical Gardens, two thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-eight seventeen, Finley Awards, twenty-five thousand dollars. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-nine seventeen, Special Equestrians, four thousand dollars. And resolution number fifty-seven thirty seventeen, Wellhouse, two thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I move for the approval of resolutions fifty-six ninety-four seventeen and fifty-seven thirty seventeen.
Sir.
Motion second. Now, one thing that I did neglect to state that if anybody, any council member would like to have any one item pulled off for additional discussion, that can occur. Any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I have a question for council.
Yes, sir.
Seeing as how my son participates in special equestrians, should we pull that out and be abstained from that?
How many other people participate in special equestrians?
Family, you know?
Over two hundred, right?
Okay, you're one of two hundred. I don't think that your vote is going to assist you in any one way.
No, no.
I believe you can vote.
We'll note that in the minutes.
Mr. Corley, could you go into a little more detail on this? Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it, with the exception of Dr. Middlebrook's one extension. Item twenty is going to be second reading of ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three fifty-two.
This ordinance rearranges, alters, and extends the city's corporate limits to include certain properties along Melton Road and Silver Spur Lane. Those properties are fifteen-twelve Melton Road, fifteen-sixteen Melton Road, fifteen-eighteen Melton Road, fifteen-thirty-six Melton Road, fifteen-forty-two Melton Road, twenty-one-seventy-three Silver Spur Lane, twenty-one-fifty-one Silver Spur Lane, and twenty-one-fifty-five Silver Spur Lane.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number seventeen twenty-three fifty-two.
Sir.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
I've got a few, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I know at the work session the other night, I asked a question, I hope it was a fair one. Did you get an opportunity to put together a list of items that these properties have that currently fall outside of Arizona regulations?
I didn't get a chance to take a look at that, and I have on the overhead the properties in question. Let's see what I found in taking a look at the properties and comparing them with the regulations in our zoning code for the A-one agricultural district. I did find that there would be at least, at least one non-conformity for every property. The A-one district does have a seventy-five-foot front setback, which of course was greater than most of the properties could afford between the front property boundary and the front of the primary residence. Size of the property is another matter, whereas the A-one does require a minimum of three acres in size. None of the properties highlighted are three acres in size. So mainly, mainly the non-conformities related to setbacks and the size of each property.
Okay, I believe, you can probably confirm this, these would be zoned for Deer Valley Elementary School, is that correct?
I believe that is the case.
Mr. Burden, you?
He'll be zoned for.
Okay.
So that's the school that currently has a double-wide trailer in the yard, right? Because of overcrowding?
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify about that. Thank you. That's really all the questions I had, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
Just like the Browning property, to me, if this were about the people who lived there, no question, slammed on. lived there, no question, slam dunk, all great folks, I've, I've watched the, the, the court's hearing on this to start with, good, good people, has, to me, the decision is always about, is this right for the city? This week, I did a planning and zoning primer for Hoover Parent Teacher Council, which I, who I affectionately refer to as the Jedi Council of PTO Parents, of all PTO presidents there, we went through planning and zoning, how it works, what annexations, and what I says, annexation is the highest bar, to me, because you're bringing land into the city, you're, you're taking all that into account. The issue of your valley zoning came up when we, they talked about what things are, are coming down the pipe, and I, I just can't see doing this in, with that, with that school's system situation, I just, I don't see what's in it for the city, this is a non-conforming thing, so, but again, I just have to stress, this is not about the people who live there, they seem like great folks, they'd be great Hoover, Hoover citizens, it's just about what's right for the city.
Mr. President, if I may?
I don't know, but...
Certainly understand the, my peers down there, their, their thoughts behind that. I will say, Mr., during our annexation hearing for these properties, Mr. Rice made a, a good comment, that these people didn't, didn't necessarily ask for this, but the city brought Hoover to them. You look around their property, it is completely surrounded by Hoover. They never asked for that, but Hoover came and surrounded them. They put apartments right next to them, they, in fact, they have been trying, they've, they've been there since two thousand and four, and they've seen the tremendous growth in that area provided by Ross Bridge. And they have constantly asked the city for annexation, so this isn't a new, a new request by them by any means. Been over a decade for them. Their last time was in two thousand and thirteen, with absolutely no response from the city. And to my knowledge, out of all those properties, there are zero children living in those properties. And none of these families have any intention of, of moving anytime soon. So, with Deer Valley being at, at capacity now, I believe by the time these lovely people pass on decades and decades from now, hopefully we'll have the rezoning taken care of by then. So I, I, I understand your concerns, I just, there's, there's no children living here, there's no impact on the schools. And like I said, we, we've brought Hoover to these people, it's only fair to them to be able to, to be a part of the community that surrounds them. Thank you.
I'm gonna take just a moment, if I can, please. I think the decision, in my mind, for me, was made when Browning property was decided. These properties currently pay fire tips, so the fire department's gonna go. The police department already patrols the area, they might not work at Browning, so they're gonna have to hold it until Jefferson County gets there. And by coming into the city, like I said, the fire department's already going, police department's gonna be with them, and this is going to provide additional funding in act of warrant taxes, property taxes, to both the city and the school system. So, I'm gonna be using that to enhance my vote. Anything else from the council? Mr. President?
Back when we were, we had the Annexation Committee meeting, as the mayor reported, of course, one of the things that would come to everyone's mind in this area is the subdivisions of this property, and the possibility that you would have more homes on the property. Can you talk a little bit about what went on with the Browning property as far as zoning, and what, what we discussed with every homeowner here for this property?
Sure. One of the issues that came up, both at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting regarding the zoning of the Browning property, as well as the Annexation Committee meeting, was the issue of potential further subdivision of the property. And so, when we engaged in that conversation, first with the zoning, or potential zoning for the Browning property, and then in looking at the annexation of the rest, the A-one agricultural district was the preferred zoning district to look at, more specifically because you had a, a low number of uses that would be permitted there, but also importantly, there is a three acre minimum on any new lots created within that zoning district. That was something that was important, both to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Annexation Committee, when considering what zone to look at for these properties. So while they may be non-conforming, if brought in and zoned in that manner, the, the positives that is that they would not be able to be subdivided again under our current zoning code. And just a couple of other notes related to zoning of the property. One of the issues that the council may like to consider would be the, the added level of control over what takes place here, with the properties being annexed to the city limits. I think we've already touched on the continuation or continuity of services, and clearing some of that up with the annexation, but also, as, as it's presently zoned in Jefferson County's A-one agricultural zoning district, there are some minor differences between theirs and ours. One notably being that the Jefferson County A-one district has a minimum lot size of one acre. So it is possible, at this point in time, them to subdivide property in Jefferson County. There's some very minor differences with respect to uses that can take place on the property. One that I, I noted was that kennels would be permitted there by right under the zoning Jefferson County, whereas that wouldn't be a conditional use under our zoning ordinance. Of course, there again, if, if there were a property owner to seek any kind of variance procedure from Jefferson County, to allow for a reduction in requirements or allow a use that's not presently required by right, that's something that's handled through Jefferson County and not the city of Hoover. So, just some other, other factors to take into consideration.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, this is my point, point for me. I understand both sides, I'm definitely for filling in gaps, I think that's something that we talked about initially, anything that's completely surrounded by Hoover, you fill those in. This is my dilemma. Earlier on also, we have denied, regardless of how large that bubble is, other pieces of property that have asked to be annexed and they have been denied. We've also stated that we're gonna wait till after the master planning take place in order to decide on these, uh, piece of properties. This is the thing, this dilemma for me, I voted on the, on, on the property, Browning property, only for that property owner that's came to the city seven years and was told to do certain things, and each time she came, maybe three, the finish line was moved, it was moved and moved again. That's not a fair scenario. But again, I guess either we're going to go back and revisit other pieces of properties that we have denied, if this is passed, or not. So that's my dilemma, I'm dealing with, being just, just and fair to all the people that have come to the city of Hoover, asked to be annexed and, can't do for one, cannot do for the other, not fair.
Mr. Murphy, just so it goes on the record, nor for those previous properties, however many there are, they would have to apply again. City cannot do a reach back. Mr. Mayor, did you have something? See, I haven't made one. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Mayor? I appreciate you, council, considering this, and I know that you give a lot of thought and deliberation on annexations, but in, in my opinion, this is a perfect case for annexation. Folks are totally surrounded by Hoover, they have no voice in what goes on around them. Say, well, they go to Jefferson County, I see one, two, eight or nine people that could go to Jefferson County and present a case, it's something that Hoover may be doing in their area, and I can say, probably without hesitation, they wouldn't be heard. I think that our voice would override them quite a bit. But just in terms of public safety, they're totally surrounded by Hoover, Hoover Police and Fire will answer that. At this point in time, we have fragmented nine-one-one, their nine-one-one calls will go downtown, or to somewhere, actually to Centerville. And just a transfer of all that just cleans up an area, this falls right into what the spirit of annexation ought to be. We need to look at these folks, considering that, considering them as our neighbors, they asked to come into Hoover, there's absolutely, in my opinion, no reason that we should deny these folks. I hope that's how you folks see it tonight.
Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Please come down, give your name and address.
Eight mostly, thirty-four fifteen Heather Lane, Hoover. Dr. Middlebrook stated, these folks, this was brought, Hoover was brought to them. They're totally surrounded by the city of Hoover. They can't build any, any other city for annexation. They don't have a, have a, a car. They can either be annexed into Hoover, or stay in the county, and as the mayor said, have no, no voice. I was not asked to speak, but one of these, one of these parties I've known since I taught him in, my boys' school, is by the person's side now. And I think these folks probably deserve, since they are totally surrounded by Hoover, with no other alternative. I think they deserve to be brought into the city. As they said, you know, the, the fire department, the police department, they already respond, I don't know about your garbage pickup. But, like I say, I, I personally know one of these children. He did not ask me to come speak, he doesn't even know I'm here to speak. But I would appreciate it if y'all considered on that basis, folks, because they, they can't go anywhere else. This is their only alternative, and they requested it before, and will continue to do so, because they don't have a voice anywhere else, they can't.
Anything else from the audience? Yes, ma'am. While you're coming down, please remember, we need your name and address, please.
My name's Deborah Fout, and I'm at fifteen sixteen and fifteen eighteen Melton Road. And I wanted to tell you that about six weeks ago, my burglar alarm went off, I set it off accidentally, and I called the alarm company, Tamperella Protective, and told them the code and everything, but for some reason, they went ahead and called the sheriff. Well, it was about thirty-five minutes later, he came to my front door, and the first thing he said, he said, "I couldn't even find you," he said, "you're right in the middle of Hoover." So I said, "Yes, I know that we are," and I appreciate all the support for those that are supporting us, but most of us down there, with the exception of Mr. Taylor, have been down there since the whole Ross Bridge project started in two thousand and four. We, we lived through all the road construction, the dust, the logging trucks, we, every day from sunup till sundown, we heard the beep, beep, beep of heavy machinery backing up and moving things, and we, I could get into so many meetings up here where I got a little blue card or a little yellow card about something going on around my property. I had no voice, but I wanted to see what it was. And on the original Ross Bridge plans, there was a school up there, right now where they're building Reynolds Landing, there was supposed to be an elementary school there, but most of us are elderly, or older, seniors, but we have no kids to impact the school system. The, the Hoover residents, when I left today, there was five or six driving up and down our street. We're part of the community, we've learned to meet, we've met some of our neighbors, we walk the trails, we shop in Hoover, and I think we deserve the right to be a citizen and be able to vote, and when we dialed nine-one-one and set away thirty-five minutes for the sheriff to try to find us to get some service. So please, support us on this, and we truly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council? Seeing and hearing none?
One second.
Yes, sir.
May. When is the master plan scheduled to be completed?
I believe we are about seven months out.
Additional questions? If not, Madam Clerk, if you please, call the robe.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lydick?
Nay.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Just mention, aye.
Mr. Posy?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Welcome to the hearing. Item twenty-one is a public hearing to consider the request for S.P. Development Board for conditional use approval to construct a parking community amenities on lot C eight dash seven of the Lake Wilburn Phase Two subdivision. The property is owned by P.R. Wilburn L.L.C. and is owned P.R. one, Planned Single Family. Mr. Corley, do you have anything else to add there?
We can just get... I'm saying better, listen, P.C. page, C dash zero nine one seven dash one three.
Mr. President, I move to approve the conditional use. Are you conditional?
Well, first we have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was...
Anybody here want to speak on, on behalf or against? Nice, pretty little park, wiffle ball park. Probably sell ice cream on the side. I guess we don't, so I guess we are now open for the motion.
And now, I would move to approve the conditional use. Sorry.
We have two motions and two seconds. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. Item twenty-two is a public hearing to consider the request of Sandra Owens, project manager and authorized agent for Circle K Stores Inc. for conditional use approval to allow gas sales at the rebuilt site of the Circle K Convenience Store located at twenty-one fifty-seven Valley Del Road, Circle State. Circle K Stores Inc. is the property owner and property is owned C two, Community Business District. Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing none, we will end the public hearing, and I'm open for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the conditional use.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. Item twenty-three, public hearing to consider the request of Jim Walsh, Ironstone Concepts, for conditional use approval for the sale of retail beer and retail table wine at Ironstone Pizza located at thirty-seven eighty River Chase Village Suite one hundred. Property is owned P.C. Plan Commercial, and River Chase Lorna L.P., here of Boil Investment Company, is the property owner. This is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against? Seeing and hearing none, I'm open for a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the conditional use.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. Next, we're gonna have a, need a motion to approve the ABC application for Ironstone Concepts L.L.C.
Mr. President, I move to approve the ABC application for Ironstone Concepts L.L.C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? From the audience? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, if you know that we have a shorter roll, Dr. Middlebrook's had to lead. So we might wanna leave him, I'll just vote to approve this. Item twenty-four, the city of Hoover is proposing an amendment to the city of Hoover's zoning ordinance regarding minimum acreage required for planned unit developments. This is the second reading, Mr. Corley.
Ordinance number seventeen dash two-three five one, amends the Hoover Municipal Code, specifically Chapter two, Article twelve, Section two dash two, which establishes planned unit development area... development area requirements for a minimum of seventy-five acres to one of the minimum sizes based upon use as set forth in the ordinance.
This has been the second reading. I'm open for a motion for adoption.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance number seventeen dash two-three-five-one.
Sorry.
Motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any comments or questions from the council? Anyone from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Lyde.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Aye. Next, we're going to set public hearing for Monday, November sixth, at six o'clock to consider the following requests which come forward for deposit recommendation from the October nine Planning and Zoning meeting. City of Hoover is requesting to rezone recently annexed single-family residents in vacant lot located at twenty-one sixty-one and twenty-one fifty-nine Silver Spur Lane owned by Dan and Teresa Browning from Jefferson County A1 to Hoover A1 Agricultural District. This is a first reading. The first reading will be on November sixth. I'm going to read it tonight. I thought you were tired. Thank you, sir.
Ordinance number seventeen dash two-three-five-three amends ordinance number two-six-three of the city of Hoover, Alabama. Ordinance is entitled, the zoning ordinance of the city of Hoover, Alabama, to rezone the property located at the attached legal description of A1 Agriculture District.
And this is the first reading. Mr. Lyde, paying the bills.
I've reviewed the bills and recommend they be paid in full. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay, the ayes have it. Comments and questions from the council? Mayor, you want to say anything about your gathering tomorrow night that we may all want to go to? Somebody dropped something up here. Tomorrow night, six-thirty, Hunter Street will be our first future Hoover, before it says we're going to fight it and have an opportunity to begin a dialogue between our residents and city leaders and see for things that we would like to sit down to Hoover and move us from number seventeen in the nation, forty-two U.S. nation. Seventeen in the nation, fifty most livable cities. Move from forty-nine to seventeen this year. So pretty awesome, I think. Our residents tomorrow night. Next at Hunter Street tomorrow. It would be nice if all of you would go home and on your tweeters and on your Facebooks, share that information so we have a good crowd tomorrow evening. I know it gave a good presentation about the city, talking about the livability, the average cost of housing, and the low taxes that we have here in the city. So it was very good to jump from forty-nine to seventeen. Maybe next time they come out, we'll go from seventeen to three, maybe one. Any other comments or questions from the council? Anyone from the audience? Arnold.
Arnold Singer, six-thirteen, River Eight, please. First, let me say that I support attractive events such as Soccer X, subject to due diligence. If I were in your shoes, sitting up there, these are some of the questions that I would ask. Who gets the $500,000? What is the relationship between the two men who presented on Thursday evening and Hoover? Why is Soccer X interested in Hoover when in the past they've only dealt with world-class It was previously stated that the two gentlemen spoke with S.F.M., but S.F.M. was either not interested or felt it was too much of a long shot. Question. If S.F.M., is S.F.M. entitled to any of the thirty percent of the monies that Hoover would earn? It is expected that the economic developer that will be hired by Hoover will bring new companies to Hoover, but quite likely events, also bring events to the Hoover Med Complex. What language is there that entitles Hoover to earn sponsorship dollars without sharing with S.F.M.? These are things for you to think about before you proceed further on this. At this point, being, having eighty-year-old antenna equipped, I'm not getting the right kind of vibe on this. I'm really concerned that we may be following the wrong path on this. I think the idea of this kind of event is great, but why Hoover? Atlanta, where these two gentlemen are from, is certainly much better equipped, much better known to be able to handle an event like this. So please, you have deliberations to make. I realize that everything is being done in the right spirit. Just say, if we wait another couple of years till they get another city, like even a Muncie, Indiana, a Paducah, Kentucky, or whatever, before us, we could follow them. I would rather us not be the leader in bringing this to this area. I think the losses can be significant. Thank you.
Mr. Singer, are those rhetorical questions, or do you really want answers?
I would love answers.
Start with question one.
Okay. Repeat again?
Yes, sir.
Who gets the $500,000?
Soccer X. They are a turnkey operation. They've been doing it for over twenty years.
Okay. Are we investing? Are we taking all the risk?
Uh, we don't. If you want to call it risk, I call it opportunity.
What about our relationship with S.F.M.?
S.F.M. will be able to get their normal rate for the use of the facilities, as far as I know.
So then...
It will not be short.
So then, if we're putting out five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in order for us to get thirty percent and break even, we then have to, before we can truly break even, for any facilities that are used at the Hoover Med Complex, we have to provide sponsorship money there. I think we need to have a little accounting take place so that we understand the business plan going forward.
Anything else? That's it. Thank you, sir. Ball's in your court, ma'am.
If I can say a couple things, I know we got to get out of this thing. Just a couple of quick issues. One, I knew you were kind of buzzing through your points, but I think we are a world-class city. And I know that for a fact because I've had firsthand experience with some international delegations that have been through here. The second thing is that you talk about an event of this size. This is a fifteen-hundred-person convention. We've had bigger conventions here in the city before. I think that we're well-equipped to handle this, and this is probably why this would be a perfect match for us. We don't have a billion-dollar facility like Atlanta does, but we definitely have a hundred-million-dollar investment going on. In fact, the total investment in that area is quarter-billion dollars, something like that. When you look at all the neighborhoods, the shopping, all that stuff's going on out there, that is a lot of world-class development going on out there. So just, there's a couple of points that I just want to take issue with. I think we're world-class, and I think this is the perfect size of a convention. Whether it makes sense on the dollars and cents is still to be determined, but I think when you look at the nature of this convention, when you look at what it can possibly bring to our area, when you look at how we compete with this particular event, I think we're right in the sweet spot.
Mr. President. Mr. Green.
I'm just looking at these prior conventions, I'm looking at where they've been. They've been Manchester, London, Paris, Los Angeles, Dubai, Johannesburg, and Rio de Janeiro. I wish I could say, but I thought Hoover was, and maybe we'll live there one day. But we can't compare with these cities where we don't have what to offer these cities had to offer for this convention. We just don't. Perhaps we will one day, but today we don't.
These individuals...
The dangers of concern that I have. If I could look on, if I could look on this and where these conventions have held it for, and held it for, and I could see other cities like the size of Hoover, I would feel much better about it. I want to say one more thing. Today, I did meet with two representatives, one representative on Soccer X, and on and on and on, he talked about how great this, our city would be for this. Then I asked him, if we are that great city for this project, why do you not want to put any money in the tail for? No, we're not putting any money in the tail for this. You pay all the risk. I said to that person, that representative, I said, "How many vendors will be there?" "Well, I don't know for sure. I think..." I said, "How many representatives will be there?" "I don't know for sure, but I think that that really doesn't give me a good feeling as far as what the return is going to be on our investment with this." That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Mr. President, a question, a question for you, Monty. How many people, when you have a convention come here, how many conventions come here and we are paying the out-of-pocket costs and they're not paying anything? And out of that percentage, from your expertise, how many have you seen do that?
From, as far as Hoover or as a...
Just in general, even when you were out west, how many people came to you and said, "You pay us this money, you take all the risk, but we're going to use your facility, your tail room," so on and so forth?
It happens a lot. Generally, there's, and I think you have big fees for some events, and then as prior initiatives, as far as entertainment, concert-wise, we purchase shows. So kind of the same concept as state with this process. So it's at some points where you take a risk, whether it's on the city side or on another public and or private side, to some extent, at times with certain events.
Thank you. I would like to say that we are not the only one right now. We are in the lead right now. And there will be a point where they decide to go elsewhere. But if you want to compare, and I know that it's a much larger scale, but it still works. Super Bowl doesn't have to pay for their expense to go play in the city. You can do the Olympics, the Special Olympics, any number of events. These people are coming to meet with the decision-makers within this industry. These are not the people that have to go back and say, "I'll get with you once I hear from the boss." They are the boss. So these people are coming to meet with the people. The fact that we don't have an Eiffel Tower, or we don't have the Cross on the Mountain like Rio de Janeiro, that isn't the selling point. The selling point of what the city does have to offer is one of the things that's allowed Hoover to keep the SEC tournament for almost twenty-five years. And it's just unfortunate that anybody would sell the city short.
Mr. President, I could also just offer one other thing. I know the mayor has invited the convention of visitors bureau to provide us with a financial analysis of this event, so we can talk about our gut feelings all we want, but somebody's going to have to put pen to paper, and we'll see. And I think that'll tell a rather compelling story, just by...
Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council? I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second. Any motion taken, all in favor, just stand up.